The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask Katie to read the mission statement, please?
I would gladly do that. "We ensure that all students are college, career, and community ready and aspire to succeed in our diverse community."
Thank you, Katie. Next is our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to roll call.
Jeffries.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Navani.
Here.
Krieger.
All seven board members are present. We're also joined at the table by Priyanka Navani, who's president of the Inter-City Student Council from Preble High School, and Josh Krieger from West High School, also a member of the Inter-City Student Council. You vice president, right?
Yep.
It's not on my notes here. And also joined at the table by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, and Sandy Heller, the board secretary. We have minutes to approve. Minutes from a regular board meeting, August 19th, 2013, special board meetings, September 9th, 2013, and special board meetings, full sessions on August 19th, 2013, and September 9th, 2013. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? All right, minutes are approved. We have no communications to be placed on file this month. And next is our building focus updates, which will be facilitated by Celestine Jeffries.
So, let's go right to the school monitoring. Yay! It'll be very exciting.
Good evening.
Evening.
The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an update on how school monitoring reports will be organized and presented to the board for the 2013-2014 school year. The development of the strategic roadmap by the Board of Education allowed for the system to operationalize the work, resulting in vision cards aligned to each strategic direction. These strategic directions serve as the primary guidance for continuous school improvement plans at the building level. The ultimate goal of school monitoring reports is to serve as a communication tool by administrators, and in particular at the school level, to inform the board on how the strategic roadmap has been implemented at the school level. School monitoring reports will be organized into three sections. Through the work with Celestine, Mike, Kim, and myself, we provided the structure that surrounds an executive summary, excuse me, so it's one of the sections, executive summary, which is an assessment of where the school is relative to the vision cards' current state and associated improvement tasks aimed at moving the building towards vision. The second section would be insight statements. This section will be provided as a means of identifying areas of growth and areas of celebration. These statements will be honest reflections of the work that the schools are doing specific to the school improvement plan, taking into consideration stakeholders' voice. The last section, we call the next steps, which is a concluding section. And in this section, we will indicate tasks that the schools will continue and the reason why we'll ask those tasks to continue, and also the events that will change moving forward in search of continuous improvement. School monitoring reports will be presented at each of the regular board meeting sessions. The scheduling of the reports and corresponding presentations in clusters will allow for the Board of Education to hear presentations representing all schools throughout this school year. In addition, clustering the reports by theme or topic would allow for leaders of the school to work collaboratively on the reports and also represent consistencies throughout the districts. Throughout the district, excuse me. As always, we're open to questions and feedback to ensure that the process is both meaningful for the Board of Education and also for our schools to report back out on their work relative to their school improvement plans. As a matter of context, before I turn it over to the board, the brief history of our school monitoring reports has really taken many forms over the last several years. And to that end, we were asked to really look at the organization of the reports, in the overall presentation of the reports, and based upon several conversations, really a year-long process of identifying that and working in alignment with the strategic direction work that the board had laid out, this comes to you today. We're set up for the next several months, the rest of the school year, for buildings to start to provide those school monitoring reports to you all, starting next month as well. So, at this point, I'd be more happy to turn it over. I don't know if Celestine or Mike has anything to add to that as well.
Okay, let's look, and I know we've, the four of us have discussed this, but I think for the boards, the list for the rest of the year, report in October of priority and focus schools, I mean, that's pretty obvious. We've had a kind of a preliminary look. Do you talk a little bit about, let's say, elementary schools? We have 27, 28, growing all the time, which is good. Our schools are so diverse in their needs, their backgrounds, their focus. First of all, how do you break down the November, December? How do you break those two apart? And even with 13, 14, 15 schools a time, how do you hone in on what your focus is going to be without it being overly broad and general?
Well, it's a good question, and that's certainly a challenge that we face in terms of the clustering aspect of it. So, we would look to identify themes or topics that unite or connect those particular schools. So, an obvious one that might stand out would be title versus non-title. So, you could group buildings based upon Title I funding or not having Title I funding. Another topic or theme could be poverty or hyper-poverty. Some of our schools in terms of those qualifications could certainly be grouped together as well. Ultimately, what we'd like to be able to do is to have a liaison. And when I say a liaison, it's really a conduit, and it might be myself.
The impacts if the teacher can put high-quality learning targets up every day and have the children who are present able to, you know, articulate what they are and be more successful. Do you anticipate that would be part of an insight statement?
Yes.
You know, and the recognition that, I think of a school like Nicolay, where large numbers of students are coming to the school from either the Freedom House or the Golden House, and they may be temporary students at that school. And it may be something that creates a different outcome because even though they're working collaboratively around the needs of children. So, will that be part of the insight statement or piece that you see in these reports?
Certainly, and well said. I think the presentations certainly provide the board the communication that they need to see the implementation of the strategic directions at the building level. But it also serves as a communication for myself and for our department in terms of listening and seeing those unique intricacies or differences, even in like buildings. And that would then provide us the opportunity to respond from a continuous improvement standpoint, how do we come along those buildings and support that process? Because that's both the beauty and a little bit of the challenge in organizing the presentations. At first glance, there seems to be some themes or topics that emerge. But as we work with Indistar, and that is that tool to aid in the school improvement process, we're starting to see that what we maybe anticipated isn't consistent in some of those like buildings. So, and that's going to be helpful as we hear the first presentation and get feedback from the Board of Education. We'll be flexible and nimble enough to be able to adjust those moving forward.
Thank you. Anything else? Chris?
Comment, if I may. Appreciate the work of the committee in putting this together. It should improve the quality of the reports that come to the board, so as a board member, I appreciate it. I also hope that it will help the people out in the buildings, help them focus a little bit more on their presentations to the board and what they're working on. I've already had a couple of comments from principals talking about the vision cards being very helpful as they started about their business for the start of the year. So, it's certainly much better than what we had, or has the potential to be much better than what we've had. And I again appreciate everyone's efforts here.
Thank you. I think one of the pieces for both the board and also for staff to get used to is that by clustering or grouping, you won't see necessarily every principal presenting or taking the lead in the presentation. So, if there's a group of four middle schools, let's just say for lack of a better example, you know, two or three may be the lead presenter. Or you may see one principal and one teacher that's part of the presentation group. So, I think that would be certainly something to keep in mind as we move forward. They certainly won't look like they had in the past.
Two questions. My first question is, how do you envision providing insight amongst the schools? So, for instance, right, so you have K-8 schools separated from middle schools, and so we have two K-8 schools. So, are you looking for those K-8 schools to have some insight that is peculiar to K-8 schools about what they're going to present? Likewise with middle schools, high schools?
Yes, absolutely. And I think the process that we engage the buildings in to determine, or to create the executive summary and the insight statements will facilitate that. That's my desire. That's my vision for this. So, we've created a template, almost like a translation copy of, here are some of the things that you should be thinking about in terms of writing the report, and how do you leverage your leadership team?
Okay.
In contributing to the report, so it's simply not the principal that is providing the substance of the report, but it is more of a representative participant approach than the principal sitting one night and just writing what they believe their vision is relative to this area.
That sounds good. The other thing too, how do you, I could ask this question of you too, Michelle, how do you envision the board providing, especially with the first guinea pig? How do you envision the board providing continuously throughout the year how we can present this report that best suits the needs of the board and the administration? Because we're doing this for the first time, so how do you envision that we provide feedback for both growth and, what was the other thing? Growth and opportunities? No. Growth and?
Yeah, celebrations.
Celebrations. Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Growth and celebrations.
I think there's just a variety of ways we could do that. And it would be certainly, obviously, that you meet as a team with the leadership through, so Mike and Celestine. I would assume that anything the board would see that they would have concerns would either come through Brenda to me directly, or could be, I would assume, through the two of you who act as a liaison to Mark and his team. So, I just, I think the piece, obviously, we want to hit the mark. It's been far too long that we haven't hit the mark. And so, this will be a year where we can really keep continuously looking to improve so that we are able to do that. I think one of the pieces that's really important is that there's value to these reports and that we aren't asking people to do work just for the sake of work or seeing a repetitive process that doesn't give you a clear understanding of if the dial is moving. We need to have a moving dial, and this, that's the intent of these reports.
Mike?
That sparks another question. Let's say when we have the first, let's say we have the Title I elementary schools in, and you have four principals and three teachers here. And the board reviews it, looks at it, has some questions, comments. How is that, how does that information get back to all of the Title I schools?
Well, I think, and this kind of piggybacks the previous question, I think we're in the process of continuous improvement. So, the feedback from the board and also the feedback from us to the schools is important. It's critical. So, I would appreciate that. Our goal is to really create that communication tool that really, it informs the Board of Education. And then, taking that same approach and understanding that this is a developmental year, that's how we would approach the other buildings. So, the feedback that we receive or the feedback that Terry and/or Lisa Bone possibly, who works specifically with those buildings, would then go back and inform those buildings in terms of the feedback as well.
So, you and, let's say you and Terry and Lisa then would take whatever came out of the board meeting and make sure that all of those staffs in all those buildings got the information. Okay. So, that's important that we do that.
Well, I would assume that if it was a focus and priority school, even if I was not the principal presenting, this was my board report, I would be present. That would be number one, and I would expect that. You know, so, and I think that in and of itself, and then obviously you and Terry can shepherd it back through.
And that's a good point. So, another, just because it was referenced here, so middle schools, although Joe Weevil from Edison may be a spokesperson, the other middle school principals would certainly contribute to offer and be present during those presentations. Yeah.
Then if you could let them know that that's a fine format, they don't all have to feel obligated to talk as much as, you know, the first person. Because I think the process, because they-
And that's what's going to be different, yes.
It tends to get into, almost to-
Competition?
Competition.
Yeah.
I would like to see, too, in part, to encourage principals to seek input from the teachers, a complete list of the contributing contributors to the report. I don't expect all the teachers who contribute to be here. I think the teachers, the principals could certainly represent their schools. But I would like to see a list of the people who contributed to the report.
Well, we definitely talked about, in our meetings, we talked about making sure the teacher voice was a part of this. And, you know, however, you know, I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I like the list of teachers who've contributed. I wanted to kind of leave it to see how things were going to go. I would love something written, but I, you know, I'm also great with something verbal, but I definitely want to see how teachers are, how this is playing out in the classroom and what their insights are in the classroom about how these things are going.
Well, we, as a leadership group, we had talked about this previously because there are certain tasks, like daily posting of high-quality learning targets, are very pertinent to teachers. You know, that is the work that they do on a daily basis. And as we evolve and continue to move the continuous improvement plans forward, there may be tasks that may not be as pertinent to teachers. So, this certainly is an opportunity, and the team that's working to facilitate the scaffold so that the teachers and the principals and the teams know how to create these, are putting together some templates or some shortcuts to help in that. So, that certainly is part of that process.
And again, it doesn't have to be a competition to see how you can get as many of their staff at the meeting.
Right.
You were thinking not all principals would present.
Correct.
But that they would be present to hear.
Correct.
And, you know, sometimes there are questions that the board may be interested in, that a specific principal who may not be at the table would be called up to answer to and respond to. So, I think that's just very important to have that, and it's one time, right? During the school year. So, it's not like it's an extraordinary amount of minutes.
Then they can turn around and watch themselves on TV the following day.
There you go.
Wait, you know, that's actually a good, sort of logistical question. When did we decide that this is going to take place in the board meeting, at the beginning of the board meeting?
Well, during our-
Which is due to the beginning of the board meeting.
It's where it is.
Perfect. All right, good answer.
Yeah. I don't want to keep them waiting.
All righty, rock on. Can't wait.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks. Now I have to get back out.
This takes forever. That's it, we're done.
That's it? Yes. Okay. Next month's report, we ought to discuss that. Okay. All done. You're done.
That is it.
I guess, you know, Sandy, we probably don't need that school site report. That's always-
Yeah. It'll come off next week. Okay. All right, thanks, Celestine. Next, we have the superintendent's update. I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Yes, thanks. First, let's focus on the calendar for October. Hard to believe we're moving that quickly already. The 1st of October, we have the WASB regional meeting here at the Rock Garden. And on October 7th, it's a very important night. If you know, to the early start, there will be a special board meeting where the budget will be presented at 5:15 here in room 331. And then, that's October 7th, and immediately following that presentation and board deliberation in action, we'll be looking at the teaching and learning work session, followed by the organizational support work meeting after that in a work session. Then on October 14th, this is very important, this is the public engagement session for the budget. So, the presentation on the 7th, the public engagement session regarding the 2013-14 budget here at 6 o'clock in room 331, and then the special board meeting retreat to follow immediately. And just a reminder, at that retreat, we'll be looking at program, open enrollment, and some of those pieces. We had a good start to the school year, but the open enrollment and some of the statutes of change in policy, so we'll spend a little time in there. And then, looking at the 16th, we have our first student council meeting for the year at 7 o'clock in the boardroom, and I'm sure you'll be speaking about that. And then, we've got October 21st, which is our regular board meeting, beginning at 5:30 here in the boardroom. And then, the public hearing and the special board meeting to adopt the budget on 2013-14 in the district budget at 5:30. So, there are some really important things happening, again, taking us back. The budget will be introduced at 5:15 on October 7th. Then, there will be opportunity for community feedback on October 14th at 6 o'clock right here. And then, October 28th is when that vote will take place at 5:30. So, it should give us the month of October for the community to provide adequate feedback before the board takes a vote on the budget.
Michelle?
Yes.
I would just like to ask Alan, when he anticipated the board getting copies of the budget prior to that meeting? Okay. Will that be delivered, or how are, I mean, that's-
Probably delivered.
Okay.
We can.
And are we still meeting on the 23rd?
Yes.
At 7?
At 7.
And that's for the board?
That's our work.
To set your agenda. Right.
Okay.
And I think that's the calendar. Then we have fall recess already, October 25th. So, that is the upcoming calendar. And then, when Melissa speaks here shortly, as soon as I'm finished, she'll be talking about open record and open meeting, which I think is a very pertinent topic as Mike moves into his report next, after that. And so, that concludes my portion.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Michelle. And then we have a legal update. I think Melissa's going to provide that for us.
As Melissa comes up, I think one of the things we have talked about just in framing of this is that there are many topics that come before public educators and governance. And open record, open meeting is something that all public institutions need to provide, so.
So, good evening.
Good.
As we discussed at one of our retreats, one of the things we're adding this year to our agenda at board meetings is just a legal update to provide the board with some education as you go about and execute your duties as board members, and some background information that may make your jobs a little bit easier or clearer, hopefully, as the year progresses. So, the first topic that I'm bringing to you under the new agenda item is public records and open meetings. That probably governs your day-to-day activities as a board member. So, I started with public records. As you know, in the district, we get a number of public records requests, and it might be good to have some background on what is subject to a public record and what are our retention obligations. So, I provided the definition of what a record is for you. And I'm not going to read it to you, but one thing I want to stress about what is a record is it's the substance of the record and not the form of the record that matters. So, a record could be a voicemail message, could be an email message, it could be an actual old piece of paper with notes jotted down on it. So long as the substance of the record relates to your function as a board member, it likely constitutes a record under public record law. The issue then becomes whether you have to retain those records. And as we move into a digital age with cloud computing and voicemail messages and text messages, it becomes difficult to comply with all of the retention requirements. The default rule is that a record must be maintained for seven years, unless there is an exception to that retention requirement. And so, when you're talking about things like text messages and voicemail messages that are largely subject to a cellphone company's retention, it becomes very difficult. In some municipalities, they have banned the use of text messages for the carrying out of a government function because there is no way to retain those voicemail messages. Various municipalities, including the city of Wauwatosa, prohibits the use of text messaging for official government business because, again, there is no way to retain those text messages for record retention purposes. As school board members, you are the custodian of your records. So, if you have a personal email address that you're using to conduct government business on, you must maintain those records yourself. If you're using your district-provided email address, those records are being maintained through our IT system. We have an archiving system that archives and maintains all of our email messages for the seven years that they must be retained. So, again, if you're using a Gmail or a Hotmail account and you're sending out email in your official capacity as a board member, you will need to retain those email messages for up to seven years. And that seven-year requirement goes beyond your duties as a board member. So, even when you're off the board, if you created that email today and you're not on the board tomorrow, the seven years will continue for that full duration. Any questions so far? This is all very interesting.
Well, yes, I'll ask one if I may.
It is.
In terms of the personal email, I have personal email, which I keep separate from school email. And I've always been very good about that. But if somebody came in and wanted to challenge me, could they challenge me and go into my personal email and look at it?
That would typically play out by making a request for your email, and we would then work together in disclosing what we believe to be subject to the records request. If the individual believed that you weren't disclosing all of the records, they could go to the circuit court and indicate to the judge that he or she believed you didn't properly disclose all of the email records. That would then have, would cause the judge to look at your emails and do what they call an in-camera inspection, where the judge would look at your emails and wouldn't be disclosed to the other party. But the judge would look at the emails and determine whether, in fact, they fall as a record under the public records law. So, they could potentially be subject to examination depending on the nature of the lawsuit.
Thank you.
And the recent Schill case out of Wisconsin Rapids where a member of the public- And the recent Schill case out of Wisconsin Rapids where a member of the public requested various teacher emails, requested all teacher emails for over a certain period of time. And the individual wanted all emails, including personal emails, you know, an email to your husband saying, "Pick up the milk." And the individual asserted that those were records under the public records law. They are, in fact, records, the court found. However, the court said that they do not need to be disclosed because the interest in disclosing the record is less than the public interest in not disclosing the record. And that's the balancing test that a records custodian has to, to partake in. So I'll move on to open meetings unless there's additional questions on your records.
Okay.
So, sorry, so the voicemail, you mentioned something about voicemails subject to open records.
That, that is correct. Voicemail is, so long as the substance of a voicemail pertains to official government business, it constitutes a record. However, the Public Records Board has not offered any guidance as to how long voicemails need to be maintained. So the, the state of Wisconsin is not maintaining voicemails longer than what the cellphone company or the state's voicemail carrier for the entire state is maintaining them. However, the university system is requiring individuals to maintain certain voicemail records. I spoke with the lead person with the Public Records Board, and she said the majority of municipalities are not maintaining voicemail records longer than what the cellphone company or your voicemail company for your, your provider is maintaining them. Because at this point, even if you were to retain those, there's no way to archive those or just search those. So the value of maintaining them at this point is minimal until a new system can be developed.
I mean, because I get messages on my home voicemail.
Correct.
So, and I delete them when I'm done.
Right. There's no, there's no easy, there's no...
There's no way to save them.
The Public Records Board is convening in September, and they're going to be looking at this issue and hopefully coming out with guidance, what I was told, within the next few years.
Years.
Yes. That's what, that's what I was told in my conversation.
Don't hold your breath.
Yes. And they have not begun to look at text messages yet, so that, that will be on the next... And, and again, with cloud computing, because of the cloud, the district doesn't own the cloud. So what the advisement is, is to have a separate backup system to the cloud, which then negates the purpose of having a cloud for storing the media.
So if they haven't looked at text messages, they probably haven't looked at tweets?
They have looked at tweets and they have looked at Facebook posts. There is guidance on that. And the guidance is if the tweets in the Facebook posts relate to your official capacity as a school board member, those must be maintained for the seven years. Currently, we do have a system in place in the district for our Facebook and blog and Twitter page that archives our posts and tweets and blogs and Facebook posts for the required seven years. But if you're maintaining your own Facebook page or Twitter account as a board member, I would work with IT in setting up a system to archive those. Go ahead, Katie.
Who incurs the cost of producing these records?
The public records law states that a municipality can charge the reasonable and actual cost of producing the records. However, a number of cases has limited the scope of what is reasonable and actual. And so other than the, sometimes the manpower in, in going through and finding the doc, finding the documents, up to locating the documents, and then the actual copy costs, the municipalities are incurring the cost of these. And it's becoming very, very, very expensive. We, there was a recent circuit, or Supreme Court decision that said the cost to redact documents cannot be passed on to the records requister. So in particular, for school districts, it's very expensive in the amount of manpower it takes to redact documents because 90% of our, our emails and documents are going to have student names and student information, and that all must be redacted from documents. And we cannot charge for those costs.
So, Elsine, then, Chris?
You know, it's funny because all the questions make me think of other questions, right? Sadly. Okay, so I'm actually going back to the beginning. What is a record? So it says, "Does not include draft notes, preliminary computations, and the like, prepared for personal use only." But I kind of don't understand what personal use only means if I'm taking notes on something that pertains to what I do here. Is that for personal use? If I record someone's message, like a, when I was in city council, I actually had a book where I would keep people's messages and then delete them off of my phone. Is that my personal use or is that, is that a governmental use?
The case law states that personal use are your notes that you take for your, for your own use. And, and what that, they look at is if you've shared that with anybody else. So if those are your notes, you're simply jotting down for yourself, and it's not in your, for the purpose of your position?
Okay.
Sure. So in, in the case of this governmental body here, Sandy is the board secretary, and she's taking notes. Her notes are not personal notes because that's in the capacity of her position as the board secretary.
But if Celeste took notes of something and then gave a report to the board on her notes, then those are, those have...
Then that's a public record.
Then those are no longer your personal use because you've now disseminated, disseminated them beyond yourself.
But if I keep the notes to myself, then it's my personal use even though it's in my capacity as a board member?
One could argue that, yes.
Okay.
There's my...
Yeah.
Good point. Do you have to have a certain type of status before you can request records from, in this case, the school district?
No.
It doesn't have to be a taxpayer, but within the school district, it could be somebody in another state, et cetera, et cetera.
Anybody, anybody can request the records. And we receive a number of records requests from out-of-state entities asking for various financial information, employee email addresses, different ways to get access to the school district, and we must comply with those requests.
Is there any, I'm not sure the motivation of some people out of state wouldn't be that curious about what we do in Green Bay, Wisconsin. But is there any talk about trying to put parameters on, on whom may have, who may ask for records?
Wisconsin is considered the sunshine state, and they pride themselves on the openness of the open records law. And so I would be very skeptical that any parameters will be placed on the public records law.
And again, just, just to make sure I heard you correctly, if I'm not repeating it. We, you say, as a school district, here we get many, many requests from outside the district and even the state, which obviously takes a lot of time to, to process.
That's correct.
Thank you. Which goes back to our taxpayers footing all that, correct?
That's correct. When records come in, records requests come in for voluminous email requests, and we're required to comply with that, it can take up to several weeks of many, many employees in the district looking for the documents, from our IT department to myself, literally reading through every single one of those emails to see if it must be released. There's a number of exceptions for documents that can't be released. And then the redacting of the documents, and then the assembling of the documents, and then the release of the documents.
You did say a reasonable fee could be assessed to that. However, that begs the question, the problem with staff not being able to do what they're here for and being taken over to do something else.
But we must comply with the law, and we welcome transparency, and so it's a, it's a balance.
And I, you know, we've had, we had one in particular that was a real onerous situation. When you go two, three years back, three, four years, and then we have to, it, it is a tremendous drain on an already-trimmed payroll department, sometimes human resource department. I, I think what's difficult is that we don't have any ability to inform our public what we're being asked to do and how much time it will take, and then a decision being made. And that particular request, I believe, was from out-of-state.
Why not? Why don't we have?
I don't believe we have any, I mean, we can put it out there. We did put something out there. But the reality is, we have to comply, you know? And, and I think that it's not a request made by people who are directly impacted by what we do. You know, if I'm a taxpayer and I live in Green Bay and I want to know what the Green Bay area public schools are doing for my money. But if I'm an outside entity working for a national organization that's doing this across the country to some end that has nothing to do with the people in our community, it's, it's just a drain. And again, on the flip side, like you said, it's a balance, and we are a public institution. We are subject to open records laws, and so we comply.
Andrew?
Along the lines of that, couldn't we maybe develop a, a practice if we have, you'd have to draw a line somewhere to be fair. And my thought would be maybe the line would be a request from out-of-state or an organization that's headquartered out-of-state, maybe? That whenever we did that, you know, we would release the records, and then we'd just do right away a, you know, a press announcement. You know, at the, at the request of ABC Corporation, we complied today with the request for records. You know, we were mandated, mandated to give ABC Reform Corporation the documents by law. It took 374.2 hours of staff time and it cost us $91,000, which we could only legally reimburse 14, but we are transparent and follow the law. And just every single time to get other, you know, if other school districts would do, would do the same. And then, you know, because there are local, you know, certainly legitimate local news requests.
Correct.
You know, there's no, you know, there's no transparency in what, you know, some of these organizations are doing that I'm sure are requesting everything from every district just to, just to run up the cost of public education.
Mike?
Maybe I have a little bit different perspectives. In my previous life, I wrote many editorials endorsing open meetings, open records. And I understand when some of these outside organizations came in and requested. But I would not be in favor of any restrictions because I think once you ask the legislature to start meddling in something, I think you could do more harm than good. The, I think the major problem with open meetings and open records is that the legislature has exempted itself from the rules law. I mean, now there's the Leah Bookmeyer exception to the open records law. There is the fact that the...
What is, what is that?
She is state senator from Wauwautosa, and an organization has requested some records from her. She has argued with the support of the state attorney general. In the past, the legislative immunity has been that while the legislature's in session, you're not subject to these laws. She has taken it that her immunity extends from the first day she took the oath of office until her term ends. So under that case, which is very interesting right now, she is never subject to the open records law and that the attorney general's supporting that, which is a really, really bad case. And open meetings, the legislature has exempted partisan party caucuses from the open meetings law. And that's why the joint finance committee sat there for 12, 14 hours, 95% of it in closed session. They did all of the work. They came up with the, their education plan for the budget, all in closed session. And that was not covered by the open meetings law. So I mean, that's if, to truly be in open meetings, open records law, the legislature should be covered itself. So that's my...
I think a different twist on that is now with vouchers, we have private schools receiving public taxpayer dollars, and those schools are not subject to...
And I will, yeah, and we'll be getting into that in my report.
Good, good segue.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is a good segue.
Alright, so I'll move on to open meetings so I don't take too much of your time. Again, I don't want to read to you what the open meetings requirements are, but the legislature has determined that when a public body convenes for the purposes of conducting its business, it must be an open session unless it falls within one of the very prescriptive exceptions to an open meetings. And what I want to highlight with you on this subject is, again, using technology, how easy it is to fall in a walking forum or a negative forum. And I don't know if you're all familiar with what a walking forum is, but...
Walking forum, negative, no.
A, a negative forum would be in situations where a two-thirds vote is required to, to pass something of the, of the body. I think I, I may, I may have put an example in here, I'm not sure. But if, if two-thirds vote was required, so a negative forum would be if a third of the body got together because if a third of the body voted no, that's a negative forum because the, the vote requires two-thirds to pass the, the particular issue instead of the one half that is normally required. That would be very limited. I don't, I can't think of anything off the top of my head where two-thirds of the body is required to pass any particular motion.
Could you amplify a little bit what a walking, walking forum is and how easily that can happen via email?
Yeah. Walking forum, if the, if Brenda and Mike are discussing something via email regarding board business, and that's fine. It's the two of them discussing, again, it will be subject to an open records request, but they could be discussing. And then Katie is then copied in, and then Celeste is copied in. Or one person emails the entire board just information only, and then someone hits reply all and then proposes a particular course of action on that informational item that would constitute a walking forum. And again, with how easy it is to hit reply all, walking forums can become an issue, especially when email is being used.
Just as a follow-up, if, I mean, that can happen. Sometimes you're not thinking, and you hit reply all and put something out there. If no one responds, is it a walking forum or it's just out there and if there's no response to it?
If no action is proposed, it's probably not a walking forum.
If there is action proposed, and it was intended to vote of the board president only, but it hit reply all and no one responds, is it a walking forum?
Potentially. Potentially. So reply all is, just be very wary.
Are not your friend.
No.
Yeah, they never are.
Move from your computer.
They never are your friend. No, I never, I really try not to do that. I mean, I think it's very dangerous.
Ms. Maloney's a very good watchdog on that.
Good. The fight, oh, go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so where, I guess, where, where does the line, where does the line get drawn? Do I have, do I have no right as an individual board member to ask one other board member's report so I don't get embarrassed bringing something up without a second?
So long as it's not the majority of what would be required to pass the...
But then I don't control that person. I mean, is there... It, it seems, it's troubling to me, but it seems like almost, almost any, almost any discussions could be construed as a violation, right? Could they put, could they put Celeste on the stand and say, "Did you ever even once talk to someone other than Andrew about it?" You know, and, you know, I mean, can they, can they witch hunt it? I mean...
I, I'm not necessarily sure it would be a witch hunt as it would be finding out if you're complying with the open meetings requirements. Yes, you communicating with Mary who says, "Will you vote this way?" And then Mary then talking to Mike, and then Mike talking to Brenda will constitute a walking forum. So again, very careful when you're having those discussions because one can lead to another. And it's easy to forward emails, very, very easy to forward emails.
I know, just a discussion among board members of, is this a good topic for an agenda? Is this something that should be explored? That might be requestable, but that's not a predetermined course of that?
Correct, correct. Yep, that's permissible.
But just sending information isn't a walking forum, right?
Just sending information is not a walking forum, correct. So you, you find a good article and you want to let the other board members know that's permissible, correct.
As long as it doesn't turn into a...
Request, which I never do. Right, no, it's, it's just a link. Here's a cool thing. Here's something interesting. Just putting it out there, right? You know, but that's, that gets back to kind of what Mike said about, you know, the caucuses that are allowed in the legislature. I mean, there's only seven of us here, but, but if they can do a little party caucus, then...
They do it all the time.
You know, they, that means they get a chance to talk about... You know, that means they get a chance to talk about what their particular goals are and-
You see, you see very, very little substantive discussion on the floor of the Senator Assembly sometime because all that discussion has happened in the caucus. And they've gotten support from people who are on the fence, you know, they've worked out deals, if you vote for this, then I'll vote for your bill, and we don't know any of that.
So much for democracy.
Right, well, that's the way-
Democracy for us.
The final thing that I want to highlight in open meetings is the openness of meeting. And I included some articles from the Madison City Council where-
That's interesting.
City council members were texting each other and texting lobbyists during the course of their meetings. I don't see anyone texting here, and so I think we're okay, but that could also be sending emails regarding the agenda items during the course of the meeting. So just another thing to be wary of and to remind yourself, again, technology and the rules of open meetings need to go hand in hand. That's all I have, unless anyone has any other questions.
Yeah, it's a good question, sure. Just from my knowledge, I can't think of any experience where this would be necessary, but are the student emails provided to us by the district under public legal, they're open to the public?
Student emails would be con, would constitute a pupil record, and there's limits on when pupil records can be disclosed under open records. The default rule is that pupil records are not subject to an open records request, but the district needs to retain those emails as well as pupil emails.
So that's kind of like the Wisconsin Rapids teacher that you were discussing, like there has to be a legitimate reason for them to be disclosed to the public?
Typically pupil records would not be disclosed under an open records request. Thank you.
Is the intercity student council considered a governmental body? No, right?
I do not believe so.
That would be co-curricular, wouldn't it? I hope.
Well, it's quasi-governmental.
But they don't-
But they don't-
But they don't-
But they don't-
But they don't sort of-
Yeah, so it's considered advisory.
We love having-
They make decisions for students.
We want to hear what you have to say, but, you know, it's, I think it's, it has to be a co-curricular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for the stuff.
Yeah, that was good.
Very helpful.
All right, next we have our intercity student council report.
What good timing. All right. So, first thing I will start off with is a little bit of electronic news. Preble High School, my high school, just started a Twitter called @PrebleFans. So anyone that is a Preble fan or anyone that wants to be in the know about games, wins, losses, that kind of thing, you follow it and there's usually, you know, like play-by-play updates for those of you that can't go to the games or like reminders to go to the games. So we've actually had really heightened fan attendance, so that's kind of a really cool thing that we had started. The Southwest homecoming is this week, I believe, so right on the 21st, it's a little bit, sort of the earlier homecomings, but homecoming week is in full swing, so all of our Southwest intercity members are really excited about that. A West tennis player recently had a three-hour-long tennis match, which I believe she won.
She didn't win.
So Josh was telling us all about that at our meeting, that was, that was pretty exciting.
She's been in shape, obviously, three hours.
Another piece of information for West was the new vice principals that came in this year. All the West kids are really excited about them because they've really been interacting with the students a lot, so they are very proud to have them representing West. East has just cast for their musical, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, so we also had a few ICSC members along with a lot of kids from East trying out and getting roles in the musical. And last but at least, the most exciting piece of news, which I'm sure all of you will be very excited to hear about, is especially in Preble and East, tardies in our schools have really been cut down this year. All our teachers, all our administrators are very excited about this, as I would be because, you know, it's taken a while to get something like this started, but we have what we call sweepers in the hallway. So if you are tardy for class, the teacher will shut the door upon the ringing of the bell and you will not be allowed into class until the sweeper comes around and writes down your name on a piece of paper, and then you are led into the class by the sweeper. So everybody is sure to get to class on time, and I would say as soon as the minute bell rings, the halls are almost empty, so it really has been good. And then, as you mentioned, the quarterly meeting is coming up on the 16th, and we are excited to start our direct interaction with the board. We already have some topics that were mentioned by Mr. Smith, the learning targets are a very controversial thing by the students-
Oh, yeah?
And the teachers, yes.
Can't wait to hear.
Yes. So that concludes my report.
Mr. Smith's excited, too.
Leave us hanging.
Yeah, leave us hanging.
I have a question for you. Did you all talk about the bus passes at your ICSC meeting or you saving that for the quarterly with the board?
We were going to save that for the quarterly if that was all right with you.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Because it was initiated by you.
Yep, okay.
All the better. We have it right from the source.
All right, thank you, Bianca. Next we'll move to the legislative liaison report, and that will be facilitated by Mike Beca.
Thank you, Brenda. Amanda, you want to get the letter up? I will read this letter, it's fairly short. This will be a letter from the board and our superintendent to not only our area legislators but other key legislators such as John Nigren and Mike Ellis, and obviously along with Luther Olson and Steve Castell. And I'll have a couple of comments to make after reading, but, "Dear legislator, as a leadership team for the Green Bay area public school district, we endorse the Olson-Castell School Accountability Legislation and ask you to support it. We thank Senator Luther Olson and Representative Steve Castell for their hard work in drafting the bill that would hold private religious schools receiving public funding through vouchers to the same accountability standards as public schools. The Olson-Castell bill is an excellent start toward accountability, but we believe the bill would be strengthened by amending it to make all schools receiving public money subject to the state's open meetings and open records laws. While 424 public school districts in Wisconsin are subject to the open meetings and open records laws, and they provide the public with critical vehicles to view how public money is being spent. The open meetings and open records laws also should apply to private religious schools receiving public money through vouchers. Work on the school accountability legislation began two years ago with a task force chaired by Governor Scott Walker and State Superintendent Tony Evers along with Olson and Castell. Both the governor and state school superintendent have stated publicly that all schools receiving public fund, funding should be held to the same standards. As you know, the 2013-15 state budget expanded the private school voucher program statewide, a program that is paid for by all Wisconsin taxpayers. What the budget failed, what the budget bill failed to address, however, is ensuring that private religious schools receiving public funding are held accountable to the same strict standards governing all 424 public school districts in Wisconsin. We are positive that you, as guardians of the public's money, want to make certain that the public's money is being well-spent. Currently, that is not always the case with private religious schools in Milwaukee and Racine that receive public money through vouchers. Thank you for your consideration of this important legislation. Please don't hesitate to contact us if you have questions or would like further information. Sincerely, Michelle Langenfeld and seven members of the Green Bay School Board." And I, and I've been trying to, I've been talking to other school boards, encouraging them to write letters to their legislators because I think this is, this is critical. It's going to be a tough fight. I think the Senate will vote on the bill this fall, the Assembly probably not until next spring. Actually, I raised this Saturday at our WSP Board of Directors meeting, encouraging others, and they all would like to see our letter, and I think they're all interested. So Sandy, when this is formatted, would you send me a copy and then I'm going to send it to John Ashley, our executive director, then he's going to disseminate it to our entire board, and hopefully they will work with other schools in their regions to get this out because I think it's really something important for us to let legislators know how we think.
We have to approve this, so I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the board letter-
Go ahead.
-to legislators on proposed school accountability bill. You approve this, Senator.
Are there any other questions or comments, Chris?
Yes, it'll be interesting to see. I'm assuming it's going to be a rough fight with this on the part of the private proquel schools. I mean, they've already shown themselves not wanting to agree to share test results with students they receive through the voucher system. So transparency, I think, I would certainly argue has not been something that the proquel schools in particular have been very good at, either as a school or church for years, so I'm sure they'll continue to fight it.
The Senate Education Committee had a public hearing last Thursday, and the religious schools showed up and said, obviously, they are not in favor of it because all of these standards would be too expensive for them.
Well, they're getting $6,900 a student, so-
$7,200 and $7,800.
Thank you.
Yes.
Right, so, which is more than the posted tuition anywhere.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. Yep, so there you go. All righty.
All right, roll call, Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Franz?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Beca?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Carrie Seven Zero, thank you, Mike, for taking the time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You know, actually, I'm sorry, I do have a question. I can't, we already voted, though. I mean, I guess it's moot now. No other issue but the open, the accountability and the open records, is that what, because there are, I think there's other issues, but that's what-
Well, there, the, and Michelle and I had a long conversation this last week. There are, there's probably like 20 major provisions in that bill.
Yeah, right.
And our feeling was, is that, first of all, we endorse accountability, the same standards that we're held accountable. If you add in open meetings and open records, that pretty well takes care of all the other issues.
All right.
Because you can find out what the graduation rates are, what students are-
How they spend the money.
I mean, that, that's the key.
Okay.
I think that made sense.
Yeah, it does. Okay. Thank you.
The second item, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau analyzes Common Core costs. I don't know if you had a chance to read this. And then I'm going to go over this, I'm just going to go over a highlights, obviously I'm not going to read the nine-page analysis. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about Sheila Briggs, who is Assistant State Superintendent of Public Instruction. She is in charge of implementing Common Core. She met last Friday with our WSP Board of Directors, had a chance to talk to her, share some thoughts with her, and I'm going to have some of her comments, and then Mark Smith is going to join us. Mark and I talked before I went to our board meeting, because I wanted an idea of what we have spent on working toward implementation of Common Core, and I shared that with Sheila Briggs, and so I'm going to have, after, through this, I'm going to have Mark go through some of those costs, and, I mean, some of the, he'll talk to you about some of those costs we would have incurred anyhow, but some are very specific to the Common Core. So, the state budget bill required, and those who don't know, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau is an independent, non-political arm of state government that analyzes legislation as to the cost. The budget bill required them to estimate by September 1st, the fiscal impact to the state if DPI takes either of the following actions, A, fully implement the adoption of the Common Core standards, or B, discontinues the implementation of the Common Core standards and adopts other college and career readiness standards. And I just wanted, I'm just going to read one specific portion, and it's on page six. Let me see if that's, no, it's on page eight. Let me go to page eight. Okay, it's under fiscal impact to the state, discontinuing, the second sentence, and this is just what I want to read, "If the Common Core were discontinued, depending on the timetable for implementing another set of new standards, a significant amount of work at the school district level around the Common Core would need to be duplicated, including a new round of curriculum reviews, professional development for teachers around instruction, curriculum, and assessments, and the examination of resources and materials, including textbooks, workbooks, software applications, and other digital materials for alignment with the next set of standards. If districts would be expected to complete this work more quickly than the usual five-to-seven year curriculum review cycle, then presumably costs would exceed those amounts typically budgeted for these activities for staff time, materials, and professional development." And then I just want to go down to the final paragraph in the letter.
Same page?
No, page nine. "It is unclear what system of assessment would be in place in Wisconsin while new standards and assessments were developed. State and federal accountability provisions require testing each year. The state's prior model academic standards with which the WKCE is aligned are not considered college and career ready. Therefore, it appears that the state could not use the prior set of standards and continue to administer the WKCE without jeopardizing its ESEA flexibility waiver." When Sheila, Sheila Briggs shared with our board, and I've given, Michelle, a copy of this to share with staff, they also were required by the state budget to do an analysis of Common Core and how it's being implemented. And that's this major piece, Transforming Teaching and Learning, Wisconsin's Journey to College and Career Ready Standards. And then there's also something in here dealing with common myths and misperceptions because there are a lot of them, and I just wanted to share a couple of comments that Sheila shared with us. She talked a lot about the misinformation, not only in Wisconsin but around the country. She has two school-aged children, and she said, "If this information that you're hearing from some sources, if it was true, I would pull my kids out of the public schools." She, she, you know, she talked about, this is standards, it's not curriculum, which is, I think, one of the misperceptions. There is still total control over curriculum and materials, as school districts always have. She said, "Some people are calling this Obama Core," obviously linking it with Obamacare. But she said, "I think you should feel fairly comfortable that nothing will change." Because she pointed out that the legislature has fully funded the assessment of the standards. So despite all of the angst I think that this report may create, she said she's confident that things will go forward. There have been some concerns raised in other states, but she said so far, no other state has dropped out of the Common Core. So with that, I think I'm going to ask Mark to come, because she talked about, if the state abandons Common Core, it'll double whatever districts have spent already.
Question, you said the legislature has funded the assessment?
Yes.
Is it the smarter balanced assessment?
Yes, yes. So, and then Mark, go ahead and kind of talk about what you and I talked about, and I think that will give everybody a better idea of kind of where we are fiscally with this.
Well, I think you summarized it quite well. Not to take the easy way out, but I really think that the notion of the Common Core being our curriculum is really at the heart of the issue. The Common Core isn't our curriculum, it's a set of standards and benchmarks, and from that, we create the Green Bay area public school district curriculum. So, and that's, that's a little bit of the tough part, so when asked, how much have we allocated specifically for the Common Core state standards, that's hard to answer because we go through a curriculum revision process for any core area, and when you have a district our size and you have a curriculum that is up in its revision process, like it is for us in ELA, English Language Arts and Math, we would go through that process regularly. I think the readiness piece, so how do you build the background knowledge around the an increase in terms of rigor, is really what we can specifically point to and say that we've spent time preparing. So where we have dollars really invested specifically to the Common Core is really in that readiness, that preparation, and that rollout and understanding of what the Common Core is. One of the specific examples falls in the area of disciplinary literacy. We did, last year, I believe it was, a professional learning for all teachers that are outside of the English Language Arts area, and therefore would have to adopt the, the standards and benchmarks that would fall within disciplinary literacy. So that was a significant investment. We estimate anywhere from probably $300,000 to $400,000 was allocated specifically to that group of teachers. But that's a significant amount of, of teachers. We've also invested in consulting with our local CSO representative, and that would be Claire Wick, in terms of coming alongside of us and, and really allowing us to, to get that firsthand information. And estimates are anywhere from $35,000 to $40,000 that we have allocated for that consulting work. And it's really in that readiness preparation piece. There's a tool that we use that also helps us in that process and preparation known as the Curriculum Companion. It helps us unpack those standards and benchmarks and helps us allow those curriculum writers the opportunity to really truly understand what it is that we're being asked to attain. And that's a relatively smaller fee, $3,000, we believe, is what the licensing annual year is for that. But when you're dealing with a million to $1.5 million investment in curriculum revision in math and ELA, which is normal for us, we would be doing that had it not been for the Common Core. So we may not have done it as soon as, or at that particular time, but we would eventually have done our curriculum revision process. And that would include things like resources and materials and textbooks. So, kind of puts it a little bit in context. And certainly, in terms of the preparation, the readiness for the Common Core, we're moving in that direction. We feel confident that we're preparing our staff members for that. So to hear that the state would consider going away from the Common Core would certainly cause us to hit that reset button one more time. And that's something that we're, we're not looking forward to. So, the other piece is, is that it is the Green Bay area public school district curriculum that we're adopting, and we're building the capacity. And I think that that's important, not only for our staff to hear, but certainly our community to hear as well.
Yeah, Michelle?
Just as a follow-up, it, it, Mark, it absolutely speaks to the fact that if they did push the reset button, everything that was done and all those dollars spent, we'd have to respend again. So, and that's really what that document that you shared, that's the critical issue. And the point is, if it is moving us forward and is more rigorous and was adopted, I'm understanding, came out of a governor's group, the National Governor's Group, which represented folks from both sides of the aisle that were in support at the time. And how many states have adopted it?
Forty-six. Forty-five in the District of Columbia, I think.
Pretty much the entire country. You start to look and say, "What's really behind this?" I think the rigors there and the college and career readiness is really the priority. And I would hate the state of Wisconsin to go backwards. It wouldn't serve any students well.
You mentioned several dollar figures. What was the aggregate? What was the total amount that's spent approximately?
Well, that's where I was, it's hard to answer that question.
Well, yeah, approximate.
Well, we spend, in estimation, you know, for K through five or K through eight curriculum revision, anywhere from easily a million to, to $2 million on that, on that process. And that includes professional learning, resources, materials.
That's, that's a big range. What approximately has been spent so far on Common Core? I think that's the basis of the discussion here as to that we'd have to...
I think the problem, Mark, is saying that some of that we would have spent anyhow.
Exactly.
But...
Double it. That's, that's the question, you know, to redo it right away. So what has been spent, that would have to be redone.
We'd have to redo it, correct. So, yeah. Exactly. And so what we've done with, for example, just K through five math, if that estimate is 1.5 million, that was geared towards the Common Core state standards. So we would have to redo...
1.5 million.
1.5 million.
So, Steve?
My question is this. I mean, there's, there's clearly been a lot of... I read two articles in the New York Times that were very negative about the Common Core. Actually, they made some good points, to be honest. But, I should say that writers made good points. But, okay, so I think this is what you're saying. If the Common Core goes away tomorrow here in Wisconsin, why would we have, why would we have to redo our curriculum? We say it's best, we have local control, that's that. Why would we have to redo it?
If it doesn't align with the standards that the state is assessing us on?
Oh, I see.
The smarter balanced assessment.
If they establish new standards, then we are in a totally different place.
Then I see. Okay.
I know. If we just annex ourselves and create our own...
Wow.
Well, and some of the resources... Then we don't need to worry about it.
...department to the next set of standards that some might not. So it wouldn't necessarily be the entire curriculum, you know?
And if you change that and your curriculum's not aligned with the assessment, your kids are probably not gonna do very well on tests. And then the public gets in uproar what's going on in Green Bay because your scores are going down.
Correct. Okay.
Brenda, did you have a?
No, it was already covered. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else on that one? Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
The next, I'm gonna go over the next couple pretty quickly. School voucher update. I think you've all seen that the, one of the big things that governor and some legislators talked about is that parents in public, those terrible public schools need an option to go, they need a voucher to go to the, the private religious schools because the public schools are so bad. Well, in this latest round of the 41 students getting vouchers in the Gray system, three of those children are from public schools. Three out of 41. And we don't even know if they're our students. They could be from one of our suburbs because they also attend the Gray school. So then, I think, some of the voucher proponents was like, "Well, you're only losing three kids. What's the concern?" I think still, the concern is, is that you're setting up two separate school systems that taxpayers are gonna be funding. And do taxpayers want to be funding a private religious school system? Because there are dozens of voucher schools in Milwaukee where 90 to 100% of the students are all, are all voucher kids. So, as the state, the voucher people are saying, "We want a voucher in every backpack." So stay tuned, because that, this is gonna get a lot more complicated. So people say, "Well, you only lost three kids. Don't worry about it. What's, what are you worried about?" Just worried about the future of funding for public education when you're gonna be increasingly funding a private school system.
But just to, to that point, though, if I'm understanding accurately, though, all the children that got vouchers, we, the taxpayers, are paying for it. Is that accurate?
Right.
And I don't have children in school right now, so that I, I have no way to know right now where my tax dollars are going.
Right.
And no way to see because they're not subject to open record or open meeting.
Right.
And I wouldn't care about the test scores much.
And we weren't, the taxpayers weren't paying for those kids before, right?
Right.
Correct.
They were already figuring out a way to attend those schools on their own or getting a scholarship from the private schools.
And now they are paying for them.
Now they are paying for them.
So, Americans for Prosperity, you know, the, the lingo is that children are not confined by their zip code. That is the lingo. And of course, in Wisconsin, children aren't confined by their zip codes anyway. So, you know, but it's, that, that argument's still going forward nationally. And that was, I saw that in the email, actually. So, yeah. Interesting.
The fourth one, WFA regional meeting, October 1st. If you would, if you were able to attend, let Sandy know, and she'll register you. I hope at least some of you can attend. The, there's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a real meaty program. One of the things I think you talked about last month is that John Ashley, at all the regional meetings, is gonna be talking about an increased advocacy on the behalf of public education, rather than being reactive to what's going on maybe in the legislature. So I think that is gonna be something exciting that John's gonna be talking about. Joe Quick will be there to talk about, give us a legislative update. There'll be a couple other things. And for the first time, when, when our board met earlier this year, we talked about each regional director coming up with a couple of people in his or her region to talk about things specific to that region, given by people in that region. So we're gonna have two brief presentations. One, Diane Dursch has graciously accepted our invitation to come in and talk about trends in school technology. And Judy Sargent from CSO 7 will be talking about the Common Core standards. So that is October 1st at Rock Garden.
Sandy, who do you have down?
Mike and Chris, so far.
Okay, I would be available. Six or six?
Six o'clock.
Dinner at 6:30?
Dinner at 6:30. Program starts at 7:30.
At Rock Garden?
At the Rock Garden.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry. Dinner starts at what time?
At 6:30.
6:30.
Then the program at 7:30.
Oh, that would be better. Okay.
Yeah, you can just go for program.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I think that, I put me down for the, I think I can do that. Yeah. Thank you. Putting it in.
And I just want to briefly mention, and talking about increased advocacy, that's one of the things NSBA, the National School Board Association, is doing. They've launched something called Friends of Public Education. It's been launched by the National School Board's Action Center. And if you, I'll just give you their website to go there. And again, talking about increased advocacy like WSB is doing. And their website is nsbac.org. And that will take you to their website and just give you all sorts of advocacy things you can sign on as a friend of public education. And then you'll get direct links to information, what's going on around the country regarding public education and advocacy.
What is the C? Is that, that takes you directly to their...
It's the center. It's the National School Board's Action Center.
Action Center, okay.
So it's nsbac.org.
Oh, okay.
And unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my report.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Next, we'll move to our, well, the same, we needed to take a break, or?
No.
We're good?
These next two reports are pretty short. Stretch.
You're feeling it?
Don't let them leave.
I just thought I'd check.
All right.
All right. We'll move to system reports, first is teaching and learning.
Thank you, Brenda. We have no discussion items, and we have one action item. I move that the bilingual second grade resources, $59,190 and 90 cents, be approved.
Second. Any questions to your presentation last week? Sandy?
Laka?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Franz?
Hi.
Carried seven zero.
We have no other matters allowed by law. That concludes our report.
And thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll move to organizational support facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Thank you.
What?
Sometimes I have these things, and I think that I just have to keep to myself. Katie was saying, it's gonna be very short. Well, when she had the microphone, but she's not the last to have a microphone.
It's okay, Chris. We're watching you.
Anyway, organizational support, I see the minutes included under Business and Finance. Alan Wagner, our person in charge of finance, presented the dates for the budget meetings during October. After much discussion, dates and times were finally agreed upon. Also had discussion and explanation as to energy conservation proposal on, sort of like a sale, you gotta spend money to save money. And that's what we'll have here in the OCA recommendation coming up shortly. Ms. Marsh gave us an update on human resources and seemed to be in pretty good shape. I assume nothing's changed since last week. So we'll go down to action items, then? Action items is, first one is that the project development agreement with Nexus Solutions, LLC, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Questions?
Okay.
Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Franz?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Laka?
Hi.
Carried seven zero.
Next recommendation is that the resolution authorizing the borrowing of NAC to exceed $9 million and providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes, therefore, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Questions? Sandy?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Laka?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Franz?
Hi.
Carried seven zero.
Under human resources, we have the following recommendations. First one being that the table of organization be modified to reflect the addition of 1.0 Materials Management/Distribution Manager, 12 months, and sell group 12, $61,000 plus to $71,000 plus, and that the associated job description, as presented, be approved.
I will second for the purpose of discussion.
So, comments or questions? Andrew?
This'll reflect the first of hopefully not too many times that I'll be voting no on new, new administrative positions until such time as there's been a general staff raise for teachers, as I, as I mentioned before. And once, once a reasonable offer is given, that's a different story. But at this point, I can't justify adding new management when we haven't done a teacher raise as of yet.
With that, and I understand Mr. Becker's point, just a little bit of clarification. It's not a totally, position-wise, it's not totally new. Yes, it is a new position, but one has been eliminated, and the overtime has been eliminated. So financially, as I explained last week, it was about a wash. Is that correct, Alan? Okay, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I mean, we, we had talked about this before, too, in terms of the number of administrative positions. And, you know, I had voted no on administrative position because I wanted to ensure that we were, that we were really thinking about the number of administrators that we really required, that there was a rationale behind it. I had had a conversation subsequent to my no vote with the appropriate administrator to get a better rationale for why we needed that particular position. In this instance, I felt that the rationale was provided upfront, you know, enough for me to say yes to it. Although, like Andrew, I mean, today I'm gonna say yes, but like Andrew, I'm on the lookout for, I need, I need a rationale. I need to know why we're adding positions. So, but this one, this one satisfies it, but I, I totally appreciate Andrew's no vote.
Michelle?
Just, just a comment. And Dr. Wagner spoke a little bit about it. It is a position that currently was never filled, but it didn't have the management responsibilities that it's, are being added. And I think the piece around that goes right back to the fact that there are efficiencies that will be built in over time that will be taken away. And I, I think will function better than having drivers driving around to get parts. That was the position where people were kind of doing their own thing. And the reason it would be moved to a management level is because then there would be supervisory responsibilities.
Andrew, actually, and then I'll go to you, Chris.
Yeah, and I recognize that on the, on the money, it's, it's a close call, but it's still adding, adding a manager when we've not given general teaching staff a raise. And that's been going on for, for quite a while. I'm not, I'm not necessarily even discounting that it's a good idea, but it's a good idea, in my opinion, after staff has been given a raise. And then we look at what's left.
I failed to ask the question last week.
and that's been going on for, for quite a while. I'm not, I'm not necessarily even discounting that it's a good idea, but it's a good idea, in my opinion, after staff has been given a raise, and then we look at what's, what's left.
I failed to ask the question last week, so I'm going to ask it now, if you don't mind. Alan, the person that left that created this opportunity was Tom Paul, correct?
Right.
Tom Paul, I worked with for years in previous capacities, he was always very good in that position. He was one of these people, whatever you needed or thought, he had a way to figure it out to get it, and he was, he was very good. He was, I think the district will miss him, and hopefully if we can find somebody to do half as well as he did, we'll be doing fine.
All right. Sandy?
Becca?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Becker?
No.
Carried six one.
Next recommendation is that the administrative intern, dash, teacher on special assignment job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Sandy?
Becca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. And we have our next board meetings listed on the agenda, are there any other matters allowed by law? Chris?
One of the things that we've already devoted on moving on are energy saving projects, and at the meeting last week, as mentioned, we can only do five million, since an Alan sent out to us a listing of different projects that are energy related that would definitely save money. And Alan, I'm, I'm not sure how to read this, on one page I have, is it between forty-one and forty-seven million dollars worth of projects I'm seeing on this page?
As far as the HVAC projects on that last page, yes.
That's only that last page, prior to that page, you have listed the five million, eight that, and those refer to projects you're trying to get done in the five million we just talked about, or beyond that?
Look.
Thank you.
The few pages that make up the five point eight million are projects that we have, smaller projects that we have across the entire district, and they were not in a priority order, they were in, in order by school. The, the fourth page, the last page, has the major projects that we have regarding HVAC projects, including Edison and Franklin and Washington, and those would likely, you know, require different funding for that in the future.
The first three pages, are these some of the projects you anticipate getting completed with the five million we talked about last week?
It, it's likely we would not have a lot of these projects on there because we only have a certain amount of time to do those projects. Part of the borrowing of the nine, or not the borrowing, the, have the resolution for the nine million is that we may utilize that if there are zero percent QZAB energy bonds out there, and again, as we've done in the past, you know, we may borrow two million dollars to do the small projects, and that's what we did last time with the QSBCs and the QZABs, the three point five million, we did a lot of the small projects, took a lot of things that were on this list at that time, picked certainly the ones that are the most, would provide the most savings in energy, and I mean, and I see us doing these projects, and we do some of these projects in our annual amount that we have in the general fund budget to, to take care of the buildings. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, thank you, Alan.
Sure.
Any other matters law by law? Do you want to entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Session?
So moved.
We do not.
We do not.
We do not. Is there a second?
There was.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becca?
Aye.
Becker?
No.
Carried six one.
Next recommendation is that the administrative intern, dash, teacher on special assignment job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Sandy?
Becca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
And last is the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Becca?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. And we have our next board meetings listed on the agenda, are there any other matters allowed by law? Chris?
One of the things that we've already devoted on moving on are energy saving projects, and at the meeting last week, as mentioned, we can only do five million, since an Alan sent out to us a listing of different projects that are energy related that would definitely save money. And Alan, I'm, I'm not sure how to read this, on one page I have, is it between forty-one and forty-seven million dollars worth of projects I'm seeing on this page?
As far as the HVAC projects on that last page, yes.
That's only that last page, prior to that page, you have listed the five million, eight that, and those refer to projects you're trying to get done in the five million we just talked about, or beyond that?
Look.
Thank you.
The few pages that make up the five point eight million are projects that we have, smaller projects that we have across the entire district, and they were not in a priority order, they were in, in order by school. The, the fourth page, the last page, has the major projects that we have regarding HVAC projects, including Edison and Franklin and Washington, and those would likely, you know, require different funding for that in the future.
The first three pages, are these some of the projects you anticipate getting completed with the five million we talked about last week?
It, it's likely we would not have a lot of these projects on there because we only have a certain amount of time to do those projects. Part of the borrowing of the nine, or not the borrowing, the, have the resolution for the nine million is that we may utilize that if there are zero percent QZAB energy bonds out there, and again, as we've done in the past, you know, we may borrow two million dollars to do the small projects, and that's what we did last time with the QSBCs and the QZABs, the three point five million, we did a lot of the small projects, took a lot of things that were on this list at that time, picked certainly the ones that are the most, would provide the most savings in energy, and I mean, and I see us doing these projects, and we do some of these projects in our annual amount that we have in the general fund budget to, to take care of the buildings. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, thank you, Alan.
Sure.
Any other matters law by law? Do you want to entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Session?
So moved.
We do not.
We do not.
We do not. Is there a second?
There was.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
What's your tomorrow?
For more information or to obtain copies of this program, contact CISA seven interactive learning services at nine two zero four six five five two one eight.